Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Mayor Mongi?
Here. The agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. I thought maybe I missed a step again.
Nope.
All second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, topics. All yours.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on the agenda is, for the topics, is North St. Paul Police Association. And they're just here to give us a general overview of their foundation and maybe their mission statement. And so I don't know who is here to speak to that. Just gentlemen.
Hey bud, how are you?
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
We're gentle.
That's good. I'm soft. I'm here, I'm Buddy Martin, representing the North St. Paul Police Foundation. We're a group of community members that have organized to create the foundation. And our central mission is to develop and enhance programs and services for crime prevention, community outreach, youth, and public safety that's provided by the North St. Paul Police Department. We're here to help them, help the department. And my goal here today is to just briefly introduce the members of the foundation and how we will benefit the city. The officers of the foundation are me. I'm the president of the foundation. I'm a retired Maplewood Police Sergeant and owner of a local insurance company and obviously supporter of the city and the police department. Our vice president is Mario Gonzalez Mitchell. He's a community member who runs a nonprofit YIM for troubled youth. And he is also a big supporter of the police department as well. Our secretary is Angie Johnson. She's sitting right in the back. Angie is very experienced and involved with police foundation operations and their creation. She has been instrumental in helping us to obtain our 501(c)(3) status and moving the ball forward. Our treasurer is Cheryl Heiner. Cheryl is experienced with police foundation finances. And she is the president of the Ramsey County Sheriff's Foundation. And lastly, our co-treasurer is Terry Furlong. I'm confident that you all know who he is. He's our former mayor. Our board members are comprised of Karen Ibarra. She is experienced with police foundations and also has 20 years' experience with graphic arts and was very helpful in our creation of our logo. Allison Shaber is a Ramsey County deputy, and she is a member of the Ramsey County Sheriff's Foundation. Ed Lovell. Lovell?
Lovell.
Lovell.
Astronaut.
Astronaut. And also a mail carrier for North St. Paul for 35 years. Obviously, very familiar with the city. And he is heavily vested in supporting the police department and the foundation. Lastly is Brandon Bramshire. He is the owner of Max Diner and also a supporter of the city and the police department. So it is a group of community members who have quite a breadth of experience in running a foundation, a police foundation, and basically comprised of like-minded, service-oriented people who just want to help our community. We share a common goal of supporting the police department when funding falls short. The city benefits because the foundation serves as a public and visible advocate of the police department. Through this public advocacy, the foundation provides an opportunity for the community to directly support the department. And the foundation serves as a conduit for the business and private sectors to support the police department through monetary aid, services, and goods. This enhances our police department's capabilities by providing additional funding to the police department raised through charitable donations and fundraising efforts. Through this channel, we're able to provide grants to support programs, initiatives, and projects that are strategically focused to complement the department's policing strategies. An example of this would be the K-9 program. I know that this is a fundamental goal of our police chief is to start a K-9 program for the city of St. Paul. And this is one thing that we can do as a foundation to help raise funds towards that effort. We could also provide grants to purchase equipment, provide specialized training, encourage professional development, and recognize employee valor. This is our first year getting started. We just obtained our 501(c)(3). So this year, we're primarily focused on getting the foundation up and running, starting fundraising efforts primarily through presence at the car show and donations. As far as our presence at the car show, we've introduced ourselves to the History Crew's exec board and gained their consent to be a vendor at the show. We will be, my apologies, I should have known. We'll be present at the car show as a vendor. We'll have a canopy that's logoed with the North St. Paul Police Foundation and a tablecloth, staffed by volunteers and board members. And at that booth, we will be conducting fundraising efforts and probably selling things like t-shirts, hats, maybe have some branded swag, that sort of thing. And other than that, our year-one goal is setting goals for 2024 to see how we can expand our operation and raise more funds for the police department. And that ends my presentation, short and sweet. I don't know if my board members have anything they'd like to add or...
I'd like to see if they have any questions.
If you have any questions.
Do you have any fundraising ideas besides the car show at all that might do for some kind of public?
You know, we've tossed around a number of ideas. We don't have anything concrete as of yet. Coupon book was one idea. But we're a little bit into the year that we could create that coupon book and have it ready for the car show as an item to sell. T-shirts and hats are a little bit easier. I know that once we've been in existence for three years, we would be able to obtain a liquor permit as a 501(c)(3) and maybe have a wine tasting or a beer tasting or something like that. Maybe sponsored by Furlongs, who knows? But, you know, those types of things are a little more 2024 goals. You know, right now, it's just been quite an effort to get the 501(c)(3), get our EIM, get the bank started, and get the seed money to, I mean, essentially just pay the insurance premiums for general liability and officers and directors and that sort of thing. So there's some startup costs involved. And it's just getting those things off the ground before we can commit more dollars towards fundraising efforts.
Really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Forward to seeing you at the car show and watch you grow.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Lisa?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. I was just wondering if you had like a fundraising goal for this year?
We haven't set a dollar amount for this year because it's our year one and we're just getting our feet wet. And I know that ultimately, our goal is to provide enough funds to fund the K-9 program. That's what we're, that's really our goal number one. And then moving past that, we'll see what develops. We'll see what the chief brings to us.
Should there be any events, I think you should let us know so we can put them on the website.
Of course. Yes, of course. We plan on being at the car show every Friday this year. Depending on staffing, you know, there might be a show or two that we miss because we weren't able to get somebody there. But, you know, ideally, we'll be there every Friday. Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you, buddy. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Hi, Ron.
So next up is McKnight Field and field use fee discussion. And I'll turn that over to Brandy.
Toss that to Ron. I'm just kidding. The McKnight Field use and fee schedule discussion is back on the agenda again tonight at the request of the mayor. The fee schedule, as it relates to the ball fields, has been adjusted twice in the past two years. The first was in April of 2021, when the city council amended the fees to allow nonprofit groups that serve youth specifically to use the ball fields free of charge with one exception. And that would be that charges would cover salaries for weekend and evening maintenance. And then last year, near the end of last year, that decision was reversed when the 2023 budget and fee schedule were approved. And at that time, it was decided that all users would pay for the field use based on the approved fee schedule. And so that change went into effect in January. And since January, several organizations have reached out to staff and members of the council to express their concerns, and they have requested council reconsider their stance on the fee schedule. So if you'll recall, last month, on the 21st, at that workshop, staff provided an overview of McKnight Field's history and the field maintenance and operation expenses. And according to Public Works, it was determined that it cost about $102 per field per day to maintain and prep those fields. And that cost does not include the field lighting. That's a separate expense. So our current fee schedule that we're operating under charges a minimum fee of $75 per field per day. And if a group wants to rent the field on a weekend, that fee is increased to $150, which covers the cost of overtime for one Public Works employee to prep that field. And then if additional services are needed, like midday maintenance, then additional $300 is required to cover the cost of two employees. So given the background that you have heard from us on the 21st at that workshop and then this additional request to reconsider, at this point, staff is looking for direction from the council on how to proceed if we're going to operate, continue to operate under the fee schedule as adopted or if there will be a modification. We're looking for direction. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank Mike for showing up today, Mike Spartan. So I had a meeting with him a couple, it was snowy, so it could be anytime nowadays. A couple weeks ago, on a Saturday, we met as far as discussing the fields and where we're at with it. One of the main questions I asked is, you know, is there lighting that's needed? And if there's any field prep that's needed as far as during the fields of that? The biggest thing that we were talked about as far as was practices. Practices that you reached out to us to talk about. And also, the fast pitch for the girls also reached out as far as where we're at with that during practices. So what you and I discussed, and when Mike and I were talking, I said, "We're just talking to the, as the council, I'm one vote, no special when it comes to that." And some information we can bring up to be able to discuss with everybody is talking about the fields and practices. And as far as the practice, if there's no prep that's needed as far as the fields being prepped from the city, so no labor involved. And I talked to Ron. Back in the day, we used to be able to get high school kids that worked for minimum wage, that you have 14 kids, I think you mentioned, in the summertime?
Oh, 10.
10, yep. So nowadays, if they get four or five at quite a bit more of a wage. So we were talking about what it takes for us to, the other things that we would do as far as if we need to provide other services that we do, you know, how do we take care of that with the wage costs and trying to find people? And then the other one was lights. And you mentioned you do not need any lights for anything as far as that. And far as field prep, for any kind of practices, the city doesn't have to be involved at all for the practices. So it's just to go out in the field, call up, reserve that time field, and then they take it from there. So that was the, is that pretty much in a nutshell, Mike?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. And then on the field days, you have your own, that's not a grader. What do you call that thing, the mesh, the net you bring around to grade the field prep?
Yeah, we are able to prep the field.
Yep.
Ourselves, which are and regular.
Okay. Do you want me to go with the microphone? Sorry. Yeah, if you don't mind. I knew I was going to get in trouble for that one, but thank you. Mike, and you live in North St. Paul and you have a North St. Paul business. Just want to say your name and address and everything would be great.
My name is Mike Svenson. We went to high school together. A long time ago. I won't date us. I'm a longtime, lifelong resident, business owner in North St. Paul. Live over by Casey Park. I'm the founder, I guess, president of North St. Paul Youth Baseball Association. Started it at the urging of our new high school baseball coach because we didn't have a feeder system to deliver players to ninth-grade baseball. So we started last February. And last year was our first year. Had about 150 kids, something like that. Expect to have a little bit of growth this year. Raise some money to pay for kids that can't afford to play and some offseason training and some supplies that we buy. So, and I didn't bring much of a presentation, but I thought I'd come for questions.
That's what, I appreciate that. So you want to stand up there? We can see what kind of questions we have. So that was kind of our...
And I submitted, I'm not sure who was from the city, sent several questions. And I brought that too. So if any of that, I don't know if that made it to everybody or not.
I don't know if that came out in the packet.
It's in the packet, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So yes, I did see it earlier when I looked at the packet. Any questions so far?
Can you speak to maybe some of the barriers that you're facing as an organization?
It's gone really smooth. You know, last year, it cost me, I don't want to say it out loud. It's embarrassing. It cost some money to get it started. So this last winter, I did fundraising with businesses. I visited 50 businesses in North St. Paul, which is pretty much all of them, I would say. Raised some money to try to offset the costs of kids that need a scholarship to play. We also bought equipment for kids that didn't have equipment. So that's been a challenge. Other than that, it's been okay, yeah. I left practice to come here. The ninth grade practice is going on in the high school field right now.
Oh, good. During our conversation, I appreciate your willingness. And that's why, you know, the information I gave you was the cost for lights and the cost for prep. And you said, you know, we were able to overcome those two. And I think for us as a city and just for kids, it's good for them to be able to take ownership of their field. Not just have it handed to them and all striped and everything else as far as that. So I was very, you know, commendable as far as that too, is to, you know, work ethic among it. Be able to have the young people understand a dollar, how much it costs and our labor. And I, you know, poor Ron and our Public Works, they get anything, everything gets thrown at them and then they make it work. But it takes a lot out of their group too as far as that, so.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge would have been paying for practices. When you have a travel team, you have one game or two games and then one or two practices per week for about two and a half months. And that would turn the cost of travel baseball from about $350 to about $550 to pay $75 per practice and per game. And we really don't need field prep at all for practices. We just need to be able to have the field. So if we paid for the game, you know, that would be more affordable, although it's not something I budgeted for this year. But we're capable of prepping it for the game as well. In fact, several times last year, we did, so.
So, and that's the new information after we discussed. That's why I wanted to bring it back.
Yeah, we don't need lights.
And there's maintenance too. And Rick and Ron and I have talked about this. There's maintenance just to have the park. We mow, we have to take care of things no matter what happens. So the prep is on top of the normal maintenance and the lights are on top of the prep. So it's to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, it's almost like a three-tier what we have as far as going forward.
Yeah, just having, the city owning the fields, having the fields. I mean, even if nobody played on them at all, we'd still have to do something with those fields weekly, a couple times a week, just to keep the grass from growing, you know, in the egg lime and just to keep the fields looking good. You know, we still have to water them, we still have to mow them, we still have to keep, you know, those fields looking good. So, you know, regardless, you know, like if Mike's using them for practices and we don't have to do any prep on them, we still have maintenance that we have to do on them during the week. But that's going to be...
No matter what.
No matter what.
If they're empty or for people.
Correct. Yep. Where the extra costs come in or the extra time is, you know, just prepping the fields for, you know, the games and, you know, the chalk and just the time to do that, so. But if that's all done during the day, you know, where there's no overtime or anything required with that. But yeah, there's just a cost to have in the fields.
Yeah. Can I add something?
Please.
I hadn't considered it until you went through the list that paying for the field use for the weekend events, I think, should be expected. You know, like, we're not holding any weekend events, but if we were, the budget would include that. Because obviously, you have to have someone that can drive the tractor to get every, so you'd have to have employees and supplies. And it's the weekend which is even harder to hire someone, I'm sure, than getting them during the week. So I have no problem with that at all. If we hold something on the weekend, we'll be planning. You know, it'd be a tournament, and you'd obviously plan for that cost in your budget to run a tournament.
I just like the idea of sweat equity and, you know, involvement. Because then it's everybody's park. Exactly. And the kids, you know, draw the line straight. If they're called out, draw a straighter line next time.
I typically drag the infield myself so we don't get a ball in the face while the kids are warming up. Because there's not as much for a coach to do.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any, you have a question, Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, just wondering of the youth that are in your league, how many are from North St. Paul itself?
Most of them are North St. Paul. There are some from Maplewood. We're trying to have this organization feed North High School. So that would include most of Maplewood as well. City of Maplewood, Neil Brenneman, I think is his name. And I have talked about continuing to have it grow. And he's offered field use in Maplewood as well. Last year, he said no fee. I haven't talked to him about it this year. But if it grew to that level where there were games in North St. Paul and Maplewood, then we'd be existing in both spaces, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A question for Mike? No, I just had a couple general statements whenever we're ready.
Any other questions for Mike? One to two days a week is what you're thinking for practice typically?
A travel team would have about three nights of baseball. If there's one game, there would probably be two practices. If there are two games, there'd be one practice. The level below traveling is what we call rookies, which is seven, eight, and nine years old. That's a little North St. Paul league where the North St. Paul teams play each other. And that's two nights a week, one practice, one game. The level below that is called Little Polers. Used to be called Pony League when NSPAA ran it. I think COVID killed it. There's about 70 kids in that, and that's one night a week. But that's on a district field. That's like Cowan.
And you said even games, you'd be able to do prep on those too, did you say?
The only games that we have scheduled that we would need, that we would even need to do field prep at all, would be eight home games for the 11 U traveling, which would be at Upper Casey. And in a pinch, we could do the prep ourselves, so.
I was just...
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that would be, we don't have any need for lights either, yeah.
Sweat equity is a big thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great. All right, you can pull up.
My excuse?
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll, just if we have something else, we'll pull you back up. But we don't want to make you stand there. Thank you. You can, no, you can head out if you got practice. Get the, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thanks, Mike. Did you want to say anything in front of him first before he goes?
No, I just want to say thanks, Mike, for putting this together. And it's, you know, the youth sports in North St. Paul kind of did one of these. And so to bring it back up, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Good practice.
No, no, that's fine. I was going to address that. So Lisa and I are the only two that have been around. I think we've changed the rules twice since we've been here. Two years ago, when I first sat here, we made the decision that we would open the fields to any nonprofit for free. Last year, when we sat here and evaluated what was going on, the information provided and the guidance given were there weren't a whole lot of North St. Paul groups that were benefiting from the free usage of the field. It was other communities, other, you know, other leagues, other, you know, anything else that could come up with something that appeared to be nonprofit to fit the criteria. And I felt that, in essence, North St. Paul was somewhat being taken advantage of. I wasn't aware that, you know, there was a youth baseball program that was playing here. Or I may have changed my mind or had an addendum made at that time. And digging through, I found that there's a girls' program and I found that there's a football program, which the decisions that I made from a fee structure were made primarily and solely on the fact that North St. Paul was doing a lot of giving and not getting a lot of, getting a lot back in return. And there weren't necessarily a ton of North St. Paul youth involved in the sports that were out there. So I am, long story short, I am certainly amenable to making, making the right decisions for North St. Paul sporting teams, but doing so cautiously that we don't get in the situation that we were in before. Lisa, did I do okay? Did you have anything different that you remember?
No, it sounds like what I remember from two years ago.
All right. And from that standpoint, Ron, I, I get it. You want to drag the fields when you can. Cause if they do it when the thing's muddy, you're going to get the bumps and the ruts and the liability that comes along with it and everything else. So for me, would love to hear your, you know, what, what, now that it's been presented, what they're looking for, what's it really going to look like from public work standpoint?
Well, for, from public work standpoint, it's not something that we can't do. We have always taken care of fields. We've always had to take care of the fields. The money part of it, I was never involved with or needed to be involved with, you know, whether they're paying or not or, yeah, any of that. So what you said, that this group wasn't around back then when you guys made that, made those decisions for that. You know, I guess to me, the bottom line is, you know, it's up to you guys to kind of decide, hey, do we want to pay for this or, or not? And I have the capacity to do it. We always have had, we've done some type of ball fields. It's been going down and down over the years, how much we had to do. You know, we used to do 15 or 17 fields and, you know, now it's, it's a lot less. What you guys voted on before, it was that these outside groups or these men's league or the 3M league, these adult leagues that came in after, and it really wasn't North St. Paul residents. There were, we lost the Athletic Association. Now we have these groups that are doing this kind of stuff. And, you know, I think you said it very well. I mean, you look at it a little bit differently now. Yeah, for us, though, with the school district using our field, you know, there's, there's a cost to the city for doing this regardless. We want to, I want to keep the fields looking good as long as we have them. Whether people are using them or not, we're still going to have to do some level of maintenance. It's not going to be up to, you know, where we don't have to go out, if they're not being used at all, we don't have to go out and chalk them and, you know, redo them all the time that way. But we do have to maintain them. I mean, and like I said, I think at best, maybe twice a week, we'd have to go out there, drag all the fields just to keep everything looking decent with it. To go, if you're speaking with, from Mike, for us to prep his fields for eight games, can we do that? And yeah, that's no problem. That's not even, you know, that's, yeah, no, no problem. I mean, it's, the girls' fast pitch, I don't know what the type of schedule they got. But again, we, we have done it. We have done it over the years. I think where it gets into where it costs the city more, in the past, we'd have, let's say, the high school girls, they play their fast pitch at, I don't know what time the games are, 3:30, 4 o'clock early. But we had overlapping adult leagues on that same night. So we'd have to have guys in on overtime in between those two, because the fields would have to get set up differently. Base paths were different, pitching rubbers were different. So there was some overtime involved in making those fields work for, you know, for that. But I mean, that's kind of a different, a different topic or a different deal with that. I mean, for the, this Mike here or the girls' fast pitch, like I said, I haven't seen their schedule yet, you know, what that would require, but.
He's the one that reached out and he mentioned something about, you know, practices for, you know, as far as they can take care of everything for their own practice. So if we can kind of do maintenance, prep, lights, I think for categories, you know, that type of thing for practices, you know, know that they take care of everything themselves type of thing. Cause a lot of prices twice a week, they practice, they might only have one game.
Yes, and I, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, I, I want to do what we can do to make things work. And, you know, it, it's, I, I guess what I can say is that I have always had to dedicate a person or two to do field maintenance. So this isn't something new that I have to come up with or figure out. Or it's not like we're going to not be doing something else because of this, because it's not a big demand. It's not a super high demand. You know, if we were talking, you know, 400 teams a week that were using these from 6 till 10 o'clock every night and we had to do a bunch of changing arounds, it would be a different thing. But, you know, again, it's, we just can't, we can't let just, hey, anyone that wants to come in and use the fields, do your own field maintenance and then we don't have to be involved with it at all. And we're still going to have to keep up on, you know, maintaining those fields so they, they stay decent.
Is there danger to you, or danger is the wrong word, but for what I'll call amateurs maintaining their own vehicle field and prepping their own field, can they screw up a field? Can they make more work for you?
Yes, they, they could, you know, depending on how they handle, if they're out there, if they're out there at night, maybe they shouldn't be out there when it's really wet. You know, if we're going, hey, if you're, they're going to use a, hey, we're going to use the field Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for practice. And they go out there at night when it's raining out, they use the fields, fields dry out the next day, there's big ruts in there. Or they take shovels and they dig holes or they throw all the stuff out and the water out into the outfield. Yeah, I mean, there's certain ways to take care of them properly without making more of a mess. So, I mean, yes, there is that opportunity for that to happen. And in, you know, years way back, the school district used to prep their own fields at McKnight for their games. And over the course of that year, when they were doing that, some of how they maintained it or how they were not maintaining it, basically it was decided, hey, we'll, we'll take care of our own fields, you guys take care of your own fields because of how they got, or the lack of, how they maintain them.
Oh, do, do we, and maybe I should have thought further ahead when Mike was still here. Do you have any idea how many teams he has, how many practices per night at each field? I mean, I'm just trying to think, is there a way that we can designate Upper Casey to this age group of kids and?
He does have them designated.
I think, I think that's what he has, Tim.
Okay.
So for the size field, like when he said Upper Casey, that's for that age group of kids. I think he has some, another part, age group of kids he has, I believe they're using Harmony Field, which is actually the district field. And then he's using Collin Field for, I think he called them the Little Polers or the
Yeah, all right.
So, yeah, those, it's kind of, what fields he uses are going to be pretty much the same ones, I think, for that age group of kids.
So they, we'd be able to limit the number of fields that your crew would have to do maintenance on?
Yeah, and, yeah. And if he's sitting there having eight games at Upper Casey, you know, that's, I mean, I, I don't have any concern with that at all.
How about practices though? Because you just mentioned about getting ready. Then can they still do, they still set up their own practice? Cause if it then is practice besides eight games, then it's more.
Yeah, and if they're doing, like I said, if they're, if we're not, if there's stuff scheduled, then there was last year for the girls' fast pitch stuff where they're, they reserve the field. So on our field, we have a field maintenance calendar that we, that we have. And it was basically, the field is reserved for, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday night for practices and it says no maintenance on there. So our guys, we look at that, that's field schedule every single day. So I know what to plan for, what to have the guys do. And we go on there, look at their, look at it and, hey, if, if there's three weeks of scheduled, just practices, no maintenance, I'll have the guys go out there a couple of times a week, just drag the fields just to keep them in shape. So, I mean, really the no maintenance, no practice, we're not really doing anything with the field other than what we normally would do, even if they weren't scheduled.
So just in my mind, so if they want to practice, they'll call up and say, we want field five for practice from 3:00 to 4:30. And as far as the city, we don't do anything. They just go there and
Yep.
What they need to do with it.
It's just marked down on our field maintenance calendar that we know that they're there.
Okay, all right.
I believe so.
Have we received a schedule at all from them? Games, practice dates?
I, I don't know. I don't take the, that's, I think part of it was the money he was trying to figure out too.
Sorry.
He was trying to figure out before he scheduled time on the fields, how much he had to pay. So I don't think he's called and said yet.
Well, I'm, I don't know if he has, but I do know the fast pitch has put down their dates and I think he may have too. Sarah doesn't require a collection of fees until sometime in June. So I think the reservations probably have been put out there. But it was, it was that call to reserve fields for any purpose that triggered the hello, we're now collecting $75 for, per, per day, per field. So that's where the concern came from. So just, just to be clear, I'm pretty sure that we're not allowing use with the reservation without a fee at this point.
That's why I don't think Mike's reached out yet.
Are there any other nonprofit North St. Paul residents that have scheduled for the fields? Residents? Because this is a North St. Paul group. So I, I mean, technically, if we open it up to this group and another group of individuals say that they are a non-for-profit, provide their non-for-profit information, we charge them. So the, the reservations that we've received so far that I have become aware of is the high school, Mike Swinson's group, the North St. Paul youth baseball, the North St. Paul, the Polers Fast Pitch, which is the girls' equivalent of that. The Oakdale Athletic Association is another nonprofit. There's the Minnesota Magic, which is out of Woodbury. We've got several nonprofits and then we have a couple of for-profit groups that also have some reservations over the year, over the summer. And they're all being charged. Under the current fee schedule, yeah, everybody should be receiving a bill, assuming they move forward with it.
Okay, for myself.
Go ahead.
For myself, if it is a North St. Paul-based organization, I don't really mind if they're using the field for free. I don't think we service our youth very much in, in what we do. So this is one way I think we can. And if maintenance is already occurring for the most part, I think I would be in favor of that. But for that to be consistent with all, like with every organization based in North St. Paul, that's a nonprofit.
Can I just ask for clarification? So the maintenance piece, I think, in trying to understand this whole issue with the ball fields and talking to Ron for the past couple of months, it really is a difference between what can we accomplish during the working day, working hours and versus what, what's going to require overtime pay, so anything in the evening and the weekends. And so just keep that in the back of your head when you have your conversations about how to move forward.
And what Tim was kind of spoke of prior was there's some nonprofit adult leagues that were coming in here that were getting free use of the field. But they were running a, they, they may have had 24 teams, softball teams, and they're running, and they were collecting money there. You know, they had a fee, it was $800 and this person was running this fee. They were just renting our fields or they're, in the past, they were renting our fields, charging these teams to play, so that'd be 24 teams or 30 teams, whatever it might be. They'd charge them $800 entry fee and that would include the umpires and, and whatever. But some of that had, they said, we want to play on Tuesday nights when the girls were, the high school girls were playing. Until the end of the school year, there's some overlap on there. That's where I spoke of where we had to be on standby once the girls got done playing at 5:30, I'd have two guys in so we could switch all the fields over to that adult softball league. So we were paying overtime to have these fields changed so that, to the adult softball. So when, when you're talking about the nonprofits, if you were saying, hey, it's the same for all the nonprofits. Again, my view of that is a little, I mean, to me, I think North St. Paul, like the Mike Swenson thing, the girls' softball thing that are, like through North High or their, through that, I think that's one thing for a nonprofit. And then I think these other, other, there's probably another category of that too, that you have to look at it differently. Where it actually costs the city money and all they're doing is renting the fields from us, so.
I mean, I understand where Councilmember Wong is coming from. I believe that it is under the city. I'm not opposed to it, but I also think that if we, as a Park and Recs, had its specific sports, we'd be charging registration fees. Mike was very transparent in the packet with what the costs are. I think down the road that we would eventually need to charge. And clearly it's not, he's not making money off of this. He's creating a program for our youth. I'm torn, but I also, he's launching something that's only been one year, so.
Mayor, are you looking for a consensus so the staff can move forward with something?
You know, and, and just to be clear, I mean, for you guys, the money part of this, this isn't me going, hey, I'm going broke here by doing these fields and I'm spending all this money on this. One of the, where a money thing would come into play for me is that I really don't have an overtime budget for parks. And, you know, if I, if we're going in and scheduling a whole bunch of stuff on the weekends that's requiring overtime and scheduling overlap and, or in the nights where I have to pay overtime for the guys to do this, you know, and at the end of the year, all of a sudden then there's $8,000 worth of overtime that wasn't budgeted for. And you're, hey, how did this happen? And it's like, well, hey, it's for maintaining these fields or doing this. I mean, this isn't, you know, hey, this is, I'm going broke here by buying chalk or paying for, you know, these supplies. It's more that of like, hey, some of these nonprofits that are really not, the city's not benefiting anything from them. There's just some outside groups coming in to lease the fields or rent the fields and they're running a, an adult softball league that's from all over the Twin Cities. So really that's my only, you know, if, if we were going to do this and have all this going on, rent these fields out and have overtime and weekend tournaments that would cost us money, I mean, I would have to get some type of a budget item. So it's qualified, so you guys can see it and understand it and how, how that's being spent, so.
So, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering if, if then maybe, and just to clarify, I meant North St. Paul-based nonprofits would receive that? That's just from my perspective. With the caveat that if it is the weekend, then it has to be paid for in the evening or something like that. But during the, you know, other times, it's fine. I don't know if that is a compromise or?
That's exactly, you stole my thoughts.
Well, that, I mean, Mike said that he expects that.
8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, you know, is the normal public works hours.
Seven to 3:30.
Oh, seven to 3:30, sorry. Yep, seven to 3:30, Monday through Friday.
Come on, nine to four.
So I'm just trying to figure out the hours.
Seven to midnight.
If we break this down into sections that we were talking about, so, you know, as far as the, during hours, you know, North St. Paul nonprofits, which could be the whole gamut, we were talking about the football, the fast pitch, that's a category during normal public utility or public works hours. And the weekends have charge for anybody that has even the nonprofits, just like Mike said. Does that sound like a good synopsis? Did I skip or miss anything?
No, I, I'm, I'm aligned. I was ready to make some type of a consensus that we move forward. But attempting to be mindful to, to Brandy or whoever's making these decisions when pick a North St. Paul charity that decides to come in as a nonprofit and they want to put a team together while all the team, all the kids are from, pick your favorite city that's not North St. Paul. I, I want to make sure that we have wording around it that guards us, that would, I mean, this is a North St., this is a six- this is a North St., this is 622, this is a North St. Paul Maplewood program. Very similar to the fast pitch, I think the fast pitch was Oakdale and North St. Paul. Again, six, falls under 622, the kid, you know, a little bit broader terms, but I'm certainly along the, favorable of, of making an amendment to, to where we were to, inclusive of weekends for fees, but, you know, as long as it's in North St. Paul sports.
Brandy, as far as staff, is that something that, as far as trying to enforce or go those guidelines, is that clear enough? Because I know you, we're looking for a consensus and no one have to go back and, you know, that type of thing. I got the look, so.
You're used to that, aren't you?
I got the look. Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay, so we're considering an amendment to the fee schedule to allow North St. Paul based nonprofits that specifically provide youth sports as a feeder to the ISD 622 School District, free use of our fields for practice in the evenings, weekdays, weekday evenings. And then for games in the weekday, would they have to pay the fee, just like the weekends? Or only weekends they would pay?
Would be tournaments for weekends. Anytime, anytime public works would have to be involved for overtime, they would have to pay.
That would be evening and weekend.
Right.
So during the week, okay, let's say Mike, he says sometimes we have one game during the week, we might have two games during the week. We know if he scheduled the.
Can I, can I just make it simple?
See, she gave me a look.
How about, how about the rule is, like you said, overtime is involved at the discretion of the public works director? And then you can just decide when it's fee or no fee?
Can, can I throw a wrench?
Throw a wrench.
Personally, I'm against free. There are some costs. I, I would say, you know, make it down to $5, but put some sort of reservation fee just to, this way the nonprofits aren't throwing, oh, it's free, let's schedule the field as much as we can, let's make them put some thought into it, in very nominal amount, but put some sort of administrative cost just to reserve the field. A, that'll help us with our accounting and track for next year to see if we need to make changes, but some sort of small nominal fee at least.
In the reservation program, does that include fees? Like, sometimes there's technology fees and et cetera, et cetera.
I don't know on that particular piece of software, but I know that Open Gov does have a technology fee, so it's likely that that one does as well. So I, I like that idea.
Carrie, do you have something to say?
I watched the head move.
Unless we want to make one.
I'm going to throw one thing out there. I've, I beat this one. Insurance liability. So we just need to make sure we have insurance on them. Or they have insurance to provide for us, to us, excuse me.
Okay, and possibly the proof of nonprofit.
Yes, yeah. And for us to check the insurance, there's a $5 fee?
And Brian, have you determined what the number, the amount that you, the city has for a policy? Typically, it's a million under a specific program. Okay. Okay. And that obviously will have to go to all organizations to provide that.
That $5 fee, is that practice and, and then they rent the field, no matter if it's practice or games, is what was your specific?
My, my, my thought is just to put, put the.
Your name on the.
The paperwork and the infrastructure in place, where now, later if we're changing stuff, we're not going from free to something. It was always, we're just changing the rate. For, for me, just, business-wise, it, going from free to something is always a big, big hurdle, where if, if we need to change, just slowly increasing, to, to me, it's a little bit easier always.
That's the rest of the council members?
We've been free. So this is a big change. So my, my thoughts are, it's North St. Paul, it's North St. Paul youth, parks don't make money, parks cost the city money, but it's something you have to provide. I feel, I feel the same way with youth sports, North St. Paul 622 youth sports.
For free.
For free.
Okay.
With the exception of the weekends and nights.
And weekends and nights.
And for-profit tournaments.
What else can I?
White were prohibited?
And, oh yeah, no lights.
No lights.
Everything's in the dark.
No lights, exactly. Anybody else? What should we?
But we can't vote, it's workshop.
Yep.
Right? We just get a consensus.
consensus, so. Yep, so yeah, so I think we, I think everybody's opinions.
So, we should probably get a schedule from Mike?
If he doesn't have one already, I didn't, I don't know about that, if they have one or not.
But Jason, if you'd like a $25 registration fee, I'll work with you.
Well, like I say, even something, you know, all nonprofits have to pay something, even if it's $25 a year to rent.
Yeah.
Fields through the course of the summer.
No, I, I wholeheartedly agree. No, just if, yes, but yeah. Don't look at me like that!
I'm sorry.
Just shaking a nod!
Yeah, but yeah. Which, yeah, you talk.
I knew what I was talking about.
Well, it was a good conversation.
You know, nothing that has to be financially burdened some.
Yes.
All right.
Was that direction for staff?
Yeah, I can imagine now.
The, the, over the course of the summer registration, I'm sorry, was that a direction for staff?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are we, do you want to ask anything else?
Okay, I'll, I'll repeat what I believe I heard.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we are going to present a resolution to amend the fee schedule to allow nonprofit groups out of North St. Paul that provide youth sports, that are specifically feeders to the school district, use of the fields for free on the weekend, or, sorry, weekdays. Any use of the fields on the weekends, nights, or for tournaments would require a fee, and use of lights would also require a fee.
Correct, two fees.
Okay. All righty, I think I've got it.
Thank you so much.
The only thing I would add is maybe get with Sorenson as much as possible to figure out the correct way and legal way where we are limiting it to North St. Paul as much as possible.
Okay. Are we good? What else do I do here? Karen, I think we're done with our workshop, right? I will move for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Cole, councilmember Wong, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
We will meet in a few minutes, four minutes here.